Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lemon.
Present.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana. And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. And we have a quorum this evening.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to propose that we excuse Councilwoman Piana for personal issues that she's dealing with.
Without objection.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, next item of business then would be the approval of the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, the agenda, we have to call a roll on the...
Yes.
Yep. It's been moved and supported. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lemon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, we have several presentations this evening, starting with the Halloween, it says beautification awards, but I know they're also known as the booedification awards.
Good evening. Happy to be here again. We are starting out with, I hope, a picture that will show you the prize that each of the residents received. It's called the Golden Pumpkin, and it was contrived by Robin Delberton, who's, as you know, very, very creative, and so each of the residents received that. First award is to 419 East Woodland.
Could you hold up for one second? I'm not sure, is that microphone working?
I can't hear.
You can't hear me?
Could you just talk up just a little louder? It might be the microphone.
Bellowing.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Golden Pumpkin Award, first one goes to 419 East Woodland. Am I better now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And the winners are the Mastic. The next award goes to 1791 East Troy, owned by Mark Scott. The third one is 1454 Leroy, and it's the Melamins, Memmelins, excuse me. You can see their young daughter there with the Golden Pumpkin award. And the final one goes to 245 West Lewiston, Jeff and Laura Yates. Okay, that was the end of the final, the other award. The next one is the Holiday Lights Award, which is coming up. The nominations are due on the 15th of December. We've been very, very lucky, fortunate, actually, because Suzanne Janik has been quite involved with the Facebook part of Beautification Commission, and we've gotten most of our nominations on Facebook, more than we've ever had before, and it's just really rewarding to know that people are getting involved and, you know, kind of bypassing the Beautification Commission to nominate the neighbors. The other way you can nominate, though, if you're not into the Facebook thing, is to go to City Hall or to the DPW and fill out a formal nomination. We will be, the commission will be driving around on December the 17th, so when we say the deadline's the 15th, we really mean it. We'll be going around on the 17th and make our decision then, and we're hoping to have the decision on Facebook, even though we're not going to be able to meet at a city council meeting until January, but you can get the final results before so that you can go around and make your little either walking or driving expedition around Ferndale to see the winners. I've already seen one in the section that I live in, at the corner, and I'm not publicizing this to, you know, say, oh, vote for this person, but already at Paxton and the corner of Saratoga, there's huge light display there already, so I saw that last Friday night, and that's kind of cool.
Yep.
Any questions?
Excellent. Any questions? No, but thanks for the work of the group.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, our next presentation is the Ferndale Public Schools, and I see trustee Amy Butters is here to tell us all the great things happening at our Ferndale Public Schools.
Good evening. Is my level good? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Amy Butters, and I'm here to represent the Ferndale School Board, and first and foremost, what I want to say is a word of thanks to the community of Ferndale. This is my first meeting, I think, my first city council meeting, first to attend since Election Day, and our millage passed, and we want to extend our appreciation to the community for the support for the millage. Really, really gives us a good feeling that we have so much support. We were pretty confident that we had that support, but you don't know it until everybody goes to the polls and fills in the ovals, so I wanted to extend my thank you to the community for that. Just a little bit of news about what's going on in the district. Of course, so many of you, I'm sure, have already heard, our Ferndale Golden Eagle Marching Band got first place in their flight, Flight Four, at their state championship competition at Ford Field, that was a few weeks ago now, and we're very proud of our kids and our staff and all the parents and everyone, the whole community really comes out to support that organization, and so we're very proud of their first-place performance this year. They also performed yesterday at the Royal Oak Holiday Parade, and so that was another, that was kind of an encore performance for our kids to perform. If you would be interested in seeing those kids perform again, it won't be the marching band, but I do have a couple of concerts for your calendar if you'd like to come see these kids perform. There's a couple coming up in December. There's a band concert on December 3rd at 7:30, and then there's an orchestra and choir concert on December 12th, also at 7:30. So December 3rd and December 12th, there are a couple of dates to keep in mind as we get close to the holidays. The kids, of course, have been rehearsing and working hard, and so we like to fill the auditorium for those events. Of course, we've got, all our winter sports are getting underway now, we've got basketball, wrestling, boys swimming, and there's a bowling team, there's, you know, those practices are underway, and the games are getting going, so be on the lookout for those events. I want to talk about CASA. That's not a program that I talk about too often, but it is a very important program here in Ferndale. CASA stands for the Center for the Advanced Studies and the Arts, and it is housed over at Jackson Elementary, which is actually in Oak Park, and this is a consortium program, many of the surrounding school districts also participate, but this is a program for our high school students to go take classes in the afternoon. You know, some of the classes that wouldn't normally be available because we don't have as many kids that would maybe sign up for some of these more advanced classes, and so we combine kids from all over the area, different districts, to come and take these classes. And the reason I wanted to bring it up tonight is for those of you out watching tonight, maybe went to CASA, are a CASA alumni, they are having a CASA alumni party tomorrow, Tuesday, whatever, what's November, November 20, where are we at now?
It's 23rd.
Thank you, 23rd. So tomorrow, it's a lunchtime event. If you went to CASA and you would like to come and see what's going on there, it's at noon, this alumni party is going to be, it's going to be a nice thing. We've got a new director over there, and so I think it'll be, you know, a nice thing for alumni to come and check out what's new there at CASA. And speaking of advanced studies, I also wanted to just touch briefly on something that was just announced today, those of you who maybe follow the Ferndale Public Schools' Facebook page. Ferndale was just announced, we were named to the AP District Honor Roll, which means that's Advanced Placement District Honor Roll, and that means that we fulfilled some requirements to be on this list of schools that are offering advanced placement classes to our high school kids. And so we're very proud to be named to this list, and it really shows how our district is really focusing on preparing our kids for college. And in order to get onto the honor roll, we had to both increase access to these classes and also show some increase in our kids who are reaching a certain level on the advanced placement test. And all the parents of the high school students, of course, already know what I'm talking about, but basically, it's a really nice thing to be able to say that we are serving our college prep students very well here in Ferndale, and we're very proud of that. And, let's see, I think that might be it that I have here. Basically, again, I wanted to say thank you to the Ferndale voters for supporting our district on the millage, and are there any questions?
Any questions of Amy?
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for the information, appreciate it. The next presentation will be the Ferndale Area District Library, and trustee Adam is here to tell us all the great things happening there.
Hello, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So it's been a fun month. We've had a couple posters from the 30 Americans exhibit at the library. If you haven't seen them, they're very neat, different, stylized, and if you switch the slide, you'll see at least one of them.
Clicker right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have control of this. Awesome. They're a little different, but kind of neat, and I think you'll find yourself enjoying We have a bilingual family story time, it's going to be in English y Espanol at 2:00 PM on the 5th. Bring your youths, they'll have a good time. Those are really neat, they're held in the youth section, and there's those big beanbag chairs, so they'll have a good time bouncing around on those, even if they're not paying attention to the story, like my daughter doesn't. Don't make the same mistake I did, you can learn to choose the right dog. On the 9th, there'll be a class, it's hosted by Fido Personal Dog Training at 6:30, please do call ahead to register, space is limited. If you have a teen or know someone that does, let them know they can get off the Facebook, they can get their face out of a book, and get face-to-face at our Teen Book Chatter. These are teens talking to other teens about the books they like to read, and this theme is, or this month's theme is sci-fi. And also another event that you'll have to call ahead to ensure you have a spot, Build Your Own Gingerbread House, we're allowing parents and children of all ages to come, just remember, your younger children will need help, and materials will be provided. And also, thank you, but there is no start here Saturday this month, we'll pick that up again at the beginning of the year.
Great. Any questions of Adam?
Just one, actually. What's the fee for the Gingerbread House Assembly? I didn't say.
It's free.
Free?
It is free, you just have to call ahead and reserve yourself some gingerbread, some frosting, and some gumdrops.
Fantastic.
Or bring your own.
I see a gingerbread house in your future.
Oh, no, 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 I just noticed that there was no cost on there, and I wondered if that was going to, you know, restrict people from going, so I wanted to make sure that people knew that it was free.
That's a great, great deal, that's wonderful, awesome. All right, our next presentation then would be the Downtown Development Authority, and apparently, we haven't scared Barry away from Ferndale because he's back again to his second, well, third meeting now. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, as you can see back here, there's some photos just kind of rolling through of the holiday hoof that took place this past Saturday on the 21st. It's the Third Annual Holiday Hoof in partnership with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. We had about 150 registered runners, and I wanted to take a moment to thank some of our sponsors. The event sponsors, Gage Products, Local Hop, Giffords Webster's Engineers, Credit Union One, and Republic Parking. Our prize sponsors, Greenleaf Bodywork, Madison Heights Chiropractic, Body Morph, TV Fitness, Calata Chiropractic, Dino's Lounge, Embrew, and Go Comedy, and wanted to say thanks to Kurt's Custom Promotions for donating over 30 t-shirts for our volunteers. Also, the Ferndale Rotary and Level One Bank for the warming tent and hot chocolate for all the runners, which, by the way, they are still collecting warm weather gear for the homeless, new coats, hats, scarves, gloves, you can drop those off at Blooms by JR Designs on Nine Mile. And then also wanted to say thank you to the DPW, especially Jay and Luke for taking care of things before we even asked them to, and the Ferndale Police and Police Auxiliary. Also, coming up this weekend, on November 28th, is Small Business Saturday. Downtown Ferndale businesses will be participating in a selfie campaign, starting on Small Business Saturday and running through Merry Moonlight Madness. We will be encouraging shoppers to take selfies while shopping on Small Business Saturday and through December 17th, and post the pictures with the hashtag #Shoptsmallferndale and tagging the business they're at in the post, if possible. We will continue the selfie program during the rest of the holiday season, and every week during the holiday season, random selfies will be selected as winners, and a prize will be awarded. The DDA will be posting the winning selfies up to their Facebook page on a weekly basis. A list of participating businesses and deals will be on the DDA website and Facebook page as well. And then also, to cap off the evening, that same night, we're going to have the tree lighting at 6:00 PM in the Woodward Medion at Nine Mile, and we'll be joined by Metalclaws, which I am also hearing this very well, may be his farewell appearance, so maybe your last chance to see him. So come down, shop, dine, and enjoy downtown Ferndale this weekend.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, not on the agenda, but I see our county commissioner is here, so I want to give Helene Zack an opportunity to tell us what's going on in Oakland County.
By wise saying, happy Thanksgiving to everybody coming up, and congratulations that the elections are all over in the millage, and I do want to say that my children went to CASA, and we're from Berkeley High School, the best part of high school was CASA, the classes, it's a small academy, and I loved the opportunity that my children that went to Berkeley got to meet children from Ferndale and other schools, and they made friends with different school systems, and it was really healthy process to meet others from different communities, so.
Thank you.
Heads up to it. It's a very wonderful program, along with other things Ferndale offers. So I had the opportunity, I was invited as our Oakland County Commissioner to attend the Detroit Institute of Arts Board Meeting last week, and this is all part of the transparency, all of us as voters, residents, we do contribute a millage, we do pay taxes to the Detroit Institute of Arts, and roughly Oakland County contributes about $10 million to operations for the DIA, and the intent, why we voted for this a few years ago, was to give them public money for the opportunity to develop an endowment so that they can be sustainable in 10 years. Unfortunately, the Detroit bankruptcy, you know, set them back, the grand bargain, they did raise $100 million to pay for pensions and become independent, but it set them back on the future endowment, and they know that they have to work very hard. There was also some bumps in the road, and they're not used to being, not used to communicating as well as they could to the community, they're not, they were used to being a private institution versus public, and so there's been some hiccups, and so now they're trying to be more transparent, put things on their website, invite county commissioners, report, and we have amended our contract on the arts authority so that should they want to give salary increases to their leaders, they have to run it through the arts authority so that we have a better relationship in the future. But one of the things that I really liked, and we had negotiated in our millage, is to invest more in our communities, and the new director, the goal is that they are our institution, our arts institution, and we've seen them come into Ferndale and our local communities with the Inside Out Program. We have free, we have free membership, you know, we have, we get to go into the DIA for free, and the attendance has gone up dramatically, there's bus service, I know that our senior program here in Ferndale takes advantage of the bus services, I know that our schools do, and so far, it's taken them some time to get started, but in 2013, 2014, they've invested $8 million back into community impact, servicing the communities with, you know, our free entry, and I look forward to hearing more as their program grows. So we are watching. We also had a presentation from the Detroit Zoological Society last week, or a couple weeks ago at our commission, showing us again that their attendance is going up, and they're talking about going for a renewal of their millage in the primary 2016, so, and we are watching them, and again, want to support our cultural institutions. One final thing, I do want to warn seniors, we've been warned by our county IT to be very careful cybersecurity, and I know it's all over, do not answer any financial questions or open anything up on a computer, and if you are getting calls, do not give anybody personal information. There is a wave of problems across Oakland County in our local community, so it's just a warning, please don't do that.
Good advice, good advice.
One question. When does the contract with, excuse me, DIA expire? Is it the same with Wayne and Macomb County?
Yes, yes, they are in the same, so it's about, I think it's eight years from now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a 10-year millage, I think.
Yeah, it's a 10-year millage.
10-year, was it 10-year?
Mm-hmm, and they're taught, and they know that they have to work really hard on the endowment.
Yes, they do. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the number-one thing they have to do for sustainability.
Yeah, thanks.
Other questions? Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, our next item of business would be a public hearing, and we're having, we're going to have a public hearing this evening to talk about the CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant, 2016 application to fund eligible projects. Derek, you want to briefly introduce that before I open it up to the public?
Certainly. As with all previous years in the history of the program, every year, the, working with the county, staff brings forward the projected allotment for the CDBG program year, and as required by the program, the city council must hold a public hearing identifying where those resources will be allocated within that program year within the city. This year, we project that the program year 16 allotment will be approximately $80,262. This is consistent with program year 15, as council knows. We don't know the actual number until that is handed down through the CDBG program, but it, consistent with previous years, the majority of the program dollars is going towards code enforcement, as projected, $59,758 would go towards code enforcement to subsidize the cost of having code enforcement officers in the city. Public service activity, which is yard service or chore service, in the past, the city's contracted with Oakland Livingston Health Service Agencies, we expect that contract to continue. That money goes towards OSHA providing yard and other services to seniors and folks in need in the Ferndale community. That amount is $8,000 and is consistent with our previous year's spend. And then the public service activity, which is Haven, a shelter for battered and abused spouses, the program year is projected to be at $3,000 this year. So that's our allotments, and per the program, we're required to hold a public hearing and then make a motion to approve the amounts.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on the CDBG funding for 2016. All right, I don't see anyone, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'll now ask council if they have any questions or comments. Dan?
Sure. Derek, how much does $8,000 in yard services cleanup get us? Like, how many houses is that?
Oh, I don't have the exact number, but I believe it amounts to about $50 or $60 per service.
Do we get a report from OSHA?
Yes, we get a quarterly identification of exactly what service was done, at what address, how much, that's vetted by us. We pay OSHA directly, quarterly, for those services, then we submit to the county for reimbursement based on that itemized activity.
And the houses are identified through City Hall or through OSHA?
Through OSHA. They do all the vetting to make sure they're income-qualified before any of the services are provided.
Okay. And the $3,000 for Haven, is that consistent with what we've given in previous years? I can't remember.
Correct. I think, when I first started, I believe it was 4,000 years, due to changes in the CDBG allotment requirements for certain activities, that was reduced to 3,000 and has been consistent over the last three years at least.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Derek, why is there two different numbers in here? At one place it says, and these numbers equal, the 73, 758, but in another place it says it remains consistent at $80,262. Is that just a mistake?
Typo.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I'm curious. Looking through the packet, there's a list of projects, I'm assuming it's kind of a checklist. Why do we choose these projects or activities as opposed to some of the other ones that are on here? For example, public service, senior services, public service, transportation services, or sidewalks for public facilities, or senior center for public facilities?
Well, in this, the allocation of resources is distributed this way since prior to my getting here, but I'm pretty sure I understand the explanation or the reason why is, through the years where the city was having general fund difficulties and operating and dealing with deficits and budget issues, one of the primary core functions of the CDBG program is to make sure that property values are maintained and established. The best way to do that is through an active code enforcement program. I'm assuming it came down to, at one point, the ability to use CDBG allowed the city to maintain those type of staff positions without negatively impacting the general fund, and at some point, the city may want to consider whether that's still necessary or not, but due to continued budget constraints, it's still our recommendation at staff is that money, for the most part, go to subsidize staff or code enforcement activities.
Okay. And you don't see a need to increase those for any other projects or programs that they also support?
In essence, by subsidizing the staff costs, it opens up, we could switch the money around, but in essence, that money goes to subsidize staff salaries, which allows us additional general fund monies to do any of those other programs we want.
I guess what I was saying is, this time we're asking for 73, why couldn't we ask for 110?
Oh, the allotment is set by the CDBG program, it's a formulaic amount, we can't, it's not a request, it's dictated to us.
That's what I, that's what I wanted, that's okay, that's okay.
Based on population and income levels and those things, it's a federal formula.
Well, I wanted it explained so that, you know, the residents at home could understand it, and I understand it the same way, so.
So a motion would be in order, and we can, we have time for more questions if council likes, but a motion would probably be in order at this point.
I'll move that we approve the Community Development Block Grant application for program year 2016 with the breakdown as follows, code enforcement, 59, 758, public service activity, yard services, $8,000, and public service activity battered and abused spouses, $3,000, totaling, that 73 number's wrong, right?
No, that was.
No, that is the right number.
$73,758, and to authorize the mayor to sign the grant application, sub-receding agreement and the conflict of interest certification as responsible entity official signature.
Support.
So moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any other discussion? All right, if not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Derek. Our next item of business is call to audience. This is your opportunity to address council on any, any issue that you would like that's not on the agenda, because we'll let you talk to that when we get there. But come on up and give us your name, your address, and three minutes allotted to you for whatever you'd like to talk to council about. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Mary Schuster Bauer. Live at 2634 Highland Street here in Ferndale. Tonight, I'm here representing Citizens for a Fair Ferndale. First, a thank you to you, Mayor Coulter, and to all three of the candidates who are running for city council for participating in the last candidate forum that we held. They only work if people participate. So even though you were unopposed, you agreed to participate, and we appreciated that.
I enjoyed it, thank you.
Next thank you is for your past support of our Good Neighbor and Civility Project. I know that you've all taken the civility pledge, and you're at sort of a, a new era. We have in the audience newly-elected city councilperson Raylan Leaks May, who signed that civility pledge when she was on the city, I mean, on the school board. She'll be joining the city council. So I think you should just make her sign it again. And it'd probably be okay if you guys all did that, too. And then, another thank you. Our newest project is called the Race in Community Project, and that's really what I'm here to talk about tonight for less than three minutes. I want to thank you for agreeing to be our partner in this project. You know, here in Ferndale, and I grew up here in Ferndale, and we've been talking in Ferndale about how we celebrate our diversity. We've been talking about that for years. But with Citizens for Fair Ferndale in our Race in Community Project, we want to ask the question, or we are asking the question, how can we really be more inclusive as a community? And so our goal is to ask that question and then to reduce racial disparity and anything that's happening within our city. Our next event is geared toward just information gathering and learning about the past Ferndale migration patterns so that we can understand who we are today, and then be thoughtful and planful in where we're going in the future. So, we're really excited that on December 9th, right here in council chambers, and it's free, we have the mayor of Pleasant Ridge, who's also a renowned demographer in the area, Kurt Metzger, will come and do a presentation for us. And so it's, it's free, it's open to the public. And it, the doors will open at 6:45, program starting at 7:00. We'll go till about 9 o'clock with Kurt presenting, and then time for questions and answers. And I heard that there's going to be a snack or two available. So we would appreciate an RSVP if you can, so we know how many goodies to buy. But even if you don't RSVP, we would love to have you come. The flyer for the event, this is the flyer, and I took the liberty of putting some at the back table. So if people haven't seen the flyer and would like one, please pick it up. You can learn more about Citizens for Fair Ferndale at fairferndale.org. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Sharon Chess, and I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale Community Concert Band to announce yet another upcoming holiday concert. And this is on December 13th, Sunday afternoon at 3 o'clock in the Ferndale High School auditorium. Rumor has it, there's going to be a jolly elf that makes his presence known to kind of keep an eye, to make sure all the children have been good and deserve a holiday visit come December 25th. I also want to take this opportunity to thank principal Roger Smith, band director or director of bands Elon Jamison, and band director of the middle school Timothy Burke. Without their cooperation, we would not have a place to rehearse or perform. And we also now have a young man who's a senior at Ferndale High School, who is our theater technician, who puts together our sound and stage for our performance. And it's just wonderful to see what the arts program has to offer to our students and the direction in which they're going to go after they move on and graduate. It's our goal in the future as a band, once we get financially sound, to develop scholarship programs for band students who are moving on to music education. So that is yet to come. But it is our mission to be very much a part of our Ferndale High School music program. And that being said, we have almost 20 members that have been high school graduates of Ferndale, ranging in age from 20 to 74 years old. So, it's pretty amazing to see the commitment to the music. And we also have a relatively new band member who is extraordinary. He's old enough to be my dad. And he has released multiple albums over his professional career. At this stage of the game, he still mentors and teaches in lectures all about music. And very, very interesting to listen to. His name is Wendell Harrison. And like many of our other band members, his talent is extraordinary. And I encourage everybody to come out to our pre-concert on December 13th. We will also be having a fundraiser bake sale and a raffle for a gift basket created by Trader Joe's. And our sponsorship package is available on our website at ferndalefcconcertband.org. And advertising now, your small business, is also available on our website at fcconcertband.org. So thank you, and I hope to see you all at our next concert, December 13th, 3 o'clock, Sunday afternoon at Ferndale High School. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mauleye from 23441 Majestic in Overo Park. Last Thursday, about 3:33 PM, I was driving eastbound on Nine Mile, and the light turned on Hilton, and the whole traffic backed up. And I found myself with just the rear end of my vehicle kind of over the tracks. And I was thinking, this would be an awful time for those gates to start coming down. And ding, 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 ding. That's exactly what happened. And even worse, there was a car behind me that had not cleared. And we were, we were just stuck because the traffic just jammed up to the light. And until the light changed. And I considered myself very fortunate. Folks on Facebook said I was fortunate. And, but to me, it seemed as a warning sign that, you know, when you decided to narrow down to one lane in each direction, to incorporate the bike lanes, that you might not have thought completely through as to the consequences regarding the bus stop just on the other side of Hilton that now completely impedes any traffic trying to get across the intersection. And the influx of traffic coming across the tracks. In my opinion, there should be a light that's timed to stop traffic just before that light changes at the crossing so that not too many cars can fit in, on eastbound Nine Mile at that point, because it is a severe choke point. And yeah, this is a warning sign. So I thought I really had to come here tonight and address the issue.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is items that council views as routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held November 9, 2015. Item B is the approval of the specialized services contract for fiscal year 2016, and to authorize the mayor or designate to sign the contract. Item C is the approval of the backfilling of the customer services representative one position created by the resignation of the utility billing clerk. Item D is the approval to renew the inter-local agreement between the city of Ferndale and Oakland County Clemis to provide information technology services pursuant to Michigan law, and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts and direct the city clerk to forward signed contracts to Oakland County Clemis. Item E is the approval of the special event permit for the second annual menorah display effective from December 6th to December 14th of this year, as detailed in the special event summary. Item F is the approval of the grass and weeds removal, snow ice removal, graffiti removal, and hauling services contract with expert lawn care and snow removal, valid from December 1, 2015 through October 31st, 2020, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Item G is the approval of the 1461 East Eight Mile Road rezoning agreement from O S to C 3, as submitted by the Community and Economic Development Director. Item H is approval of free parking in all downtown municipal metered parking lots, parking spaces, excuse me, during the Small Business Saturday on November 28, 2015. Item I is the approval of the low bid of $156,515 of GM &amp; Sons, Inc. to reconstruct South Stevenson Highway from the city's northern boundary to East Ten Mile Road, and that the DPW director be authorized to execute the contract contingent upon the city attorney approval of the bond and insurance. And these expenses would be charged to the major streets capital account as submitted by our Department of Public Works. And finally, item J is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull or move 7G to the regular agenda for further discussion.
All right.
Your honor, if I may, I just have some clarification questions on F that I think we'll require, Derek. For item F with the grass and weeds removal, I have two questions. The bid that was, the company is, you're suggesting is awarded to, actually has a shrinkage of the quarter hourly rate over the course of the five years of the contract, which is exactly the opposite to what else. How did we go about evaluating if these numbers are realistic and they have the ability to extend through the entire five years of the contract?
Well, we, the numbers offered were offered by the applicant. And we've met with them and vetted and made sure they're willing to live with those, with those operational numbers. And they are, I mean, we can double-check and make sure. We did have one, one conversation with them about that. But they felt as they got more staff and up and running more, they are moving and locating to Ferndale, that their, their cost of doing business with us would actually reduce over the course of time.
Okay. And is the contract that we're coming out of a five-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. So that's how we do these things usually?
Yes, that's how, they've been done in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make sure that there's a clarification on the Small Business Saturday parking. A lot of people may not realize that Friday is actually considered a holiday. So there is no parking, no fee parking, or it's free parking on Friday, as well as this proposal is on Saturday as well. So, here in Ferndale, we consider Thursday and Friday a holiday.
May I ask how we're going to communicate this? Just over the web or social media?
Do you manage that?
Okay.
I understand they have a plan of attack for that.
Okay.
And then, the only other item I had was the Stevenson Highway repavement item.
But let me say, if you're, if you're pulling something that's appropriate, if not, a motion would be in order before we have discussion on these items?
A move that we.
Unless you're.
No, I don't want to pull it. I don't want to pull it.
Okay. So let's, let's move, let's just.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Excellent.
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin and supported by Polica to approve the consent agenda minus item G. Now, discussion, thanks.
Sure. No, that's, that's fine. Sorry, sorry about that, Mayor. We were provided with a map to show where this section of Stevenson Highway falls within Ferndale, because it amazed me that we had anything to do with Stevenson Highway. And it's really the 94 Service Drive as it comes in south of 696, and then kind of blends in off to the east into Hazel Park. But according to this map, and Matt, I'm hoping you'll be able to talk about this, the boundaries also show that the exit off of 696 onto 75 is also part of our responsibility based on the boundaries. And my concern is, have we made sure that that isn't? I mean, it's on 696, it goes on to 75. You would assume that it was M-dot. But up until a month ago, we would have assumed this was part of M-dot as well.
That is correct. It is that short section when they did put 696 through, that is when that small section of South Stevenson became part of the city of Ferndale's responsibility. But 696, the ramps, that is all M-dot.
Okay. And we are absolutely 100% positive.
Yes.
We actually received monetary some way back when, when that was Ten Mile, when 696 decided to go through and before, you know, and as it did Pleasant Ridge and Royal Oak, received money from the state.
So there's no giving it back?
Nope. It's ours. And Royal Oak Ten Mile Road, that was ours.
Yeah.
I remember it vividly.
Other discussion on the consent agenda? From the public or council? All right, Marty, would you call the roll on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmembers Polica?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted, the agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the confirmation of the appointment of Nina Kelly to the planning, the Ferndale Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2017. And there she is. I don't know if, I guess Derek doesn't need to say anything, but good evening. Council has your, your resume.
And I just wanted to clarify, it's pronounced Naina.
Naina, oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, it's quite all right. It's spelled the same way.
Yep, okay, great. Maybe just spend a minute or two, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background, even though we have your information, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So I recently moved back to Michigan after living in Georgia for several years. I graduated with my Master's of Urban Planning from Wayne State University. And I have since, that was in 2008, I have since been serving as a planner in various capacities. I started out right after grad school at the Woodward Avenue Action Association, and so became familiar with Ferndale there. I'm originally from Macomb County, so as an East Sider, that was kind of my first introduction to the community of Ferndale. And then I moved to Athens, Georgia for almost seven years, and served as the project manager and also as a regional planner with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. It's similar to a SEMCOG organization, but in Georgia, they call them regional commissions. And then, my husband and I decided to move back to Michigan, move back home. And we wanted to settle in Ferndale. That was always kind of our goal. We liked the community. And just recently got the keys to our very first home on weekends.
Congratulations.
So I am happily an owner of a house on Leroy Street now. And we plan to be here for a long time. And I'm really honored for the opportunity to serve the community. I've always wanted to be in a position to serve my community. And now that I'm actually in a place where, for the very first time, we're really putting roots, I am very excited to do so. So, thank you.
Great. Does anyone on council have any questions?
No, but I do see by soon-to-be address that you're going to, have you met Miss Heller yet?
Miss Heller, no. I met a woman named, I don't know if her last name is Heller, but I met a woman named Cindy yesterday. And I.
You're across the street from one of our volunteers.
Oh.
That started Ferndale.
It seems like a great street, actually.
It's a great street, one of the finest in Ferndale.
Do you live on Leroy?
I'd like to apologize to your neighbors, right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't mind his yard.
Well, it was actually wonderful, because right after we made the offer on the house, this was a couple of months ago, I noticed, because we rent a house on Pine Crest right now, right across from the high school. And I noticed that the street was closed off for a block party on that Saturday or Sunday. So I thought, oh, this is awesome. This is where I want to be.
He's still out on bond right now.
Yeah.
Got a court date coming up.
Well, I loved all your experience, but you sold me with the fact that you went to undergrad at Michigan State, so.
Yeah, proudly, especially after this weekend.
No, but I really do appreciate your wealth of experience. You know, I am curious, because we have a couple of folks on the planning commission who have graduated from Wayne State's program. Are there other programs, or does everybody come from Wayne?
None of them that counts.
Seriously, how many, how many, like, Masters of Planning programs are there in this, in the region?
Accredited, there are three. And it's. Accredited, there are three, and it's Wayne State, University of Michigan, and Michigan State. And they're all very different, and I actually, when I decided to go to planning school, chose Wayne State because it's much more policy-oriented than the other two. I love Michigan State, they're much more land use, and then University of Michigan, I've always kind of considered much more design-focused, and policy is where I was most drawn, so.
Appreciate it. Other? Oh, thank you for your willingness to serve as another fellow Spartan, so.
Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
So a motion to approve Naina would be in order?
Oh, you got it, Dan. Oops, sorry. I move, uh... You want me to hold it up for you? I move to confirm the appointment of Nina Kelly to the Ferndale Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2017.
Support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Polica. Is there other discussion? If not, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you, that appointment is adopted. Thank you, Naina. Next, regular agenda, item B is the confirmation of the appointment of Bob Lenoway, where do I know that name?
Where's he at?
To the Ferndale Beautification Advisory Commission for a term ending December 31st. It says 2016, but we should make it 2020, just so that you, he's like, I don't know why we're only giving you a one-year term, Bob, but I guess they're gonna put you on probation.
He shouldn't be alive there.
He doesn't freeze to death at the crossing guards, buddy.
What do you guys know about that?
I saw the social media post today.
Yeah, it was a little chilly out there, but I loved doing it, I loved the kids. As you, mostly of you know, we've been here for about 39 years, and have managed to have 150 kids run through our home as foster kids. And we had 12 kids, we adopted six of our 12.
150, did you say?
Yeah, we did. We had a big house on University, we had it in seven bedrooms, and a couple years ago, we decided to get rid of it, because we had a lot of empty rooms, and the older kids kept calling us and saying, "We'd like to move back in." I said, "As soon as we move out, you can move in." But I've always had a love for Ferndale and just the beautification of it, we, last summer and spring, I volunteered my services with senior citizens, so I went all over Ferndale helping them redo their garden. Like, I was helping one guy put in 120 big things of grass, and he sat down for a while, and he said, "Boy," he said, "I'm tired, he said, "I'm getting too old." And I said, "How old are you?" He said, "56." And I go, "Yeah, you are, you are getting old." He said, "What about you?" I said, "I'm a young 72." But I really loved doing it, we got the beautification award this year, which was really nice. And it, it's just really nice to go around, and I'm glad to see I had, I had a business over on Camborn and Hilton, and after we left it, that building was in really, really bad shape, and I'm so glad to see that they're redoing that whole building, because I hate to see that as an eyesore, and somebody said, "Oh, yeah, that was Lenny's place." I go, "Well, yeah, it was, but, you know, I'm not responsible for it." But I, I look forward to, to being on this commission, and meeting all the other people, and continue doing what I'm doing.
So, other?
I'll move to confirm the appointment of Bob Lenoway to the Ferndale Beautification Advisory Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2016.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polica.
I just want to say that, you know, Bob, we really appreciate you, you know, stepping up and continuing your support to our community. When you, when you owned Lenny's, you, you always supported the communities, all the nonprofits, giving us great discounts on everything, and you can, now you continue to serve the community on boards and commissions, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And Bob, I'm gonna stop down there tomorrow and see if I can arrange with the contractors, because they're hit and miss, to save that sign that's on the side of the building for you.
Oh, okay, yeah, I saw them both, and I thought about it.
Before they get too far.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thanks, Bob. You're a treasure to this community, and I appreciate that you're always willing to step up and do something else, so appreciate you very much.
It's been exciting.
Yes, all right. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second, so Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Absolutely, yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you, that appointment is also adopted. Moving on now to regular agenda, item C is the consideration of a special land use for 1333 East Eight Mile Road rezoning from O.S. to M1. Oh, yeah, our new full-timer is gonna handle that one.
That's right.
Excellent.
That eats it every day.
Good evening, yes.
Good evening.
So, I'm Justin Lyons from the Community and Economic Development Department, and we have an application for a conditional rezoning at 133, 1333 East Eight Mile Road from its existing zoning, which is Office Service, to M1 Limited Industrial, to permit an indoor self-storage facility at the site. This, in order for self-storage to be permitted at the site, this also requires a special land use approval to be permitted in the limited industrial district, so we are considering two motions tonight at once. The applicant, I'll let him kind of get into the business end of the rezoning, but he's proposing to do 165 storage units in the facility. The building is currently vacant, and according with the zoning ordinance, the planning commission held the first public hearing on September 16th, 2015, and they recommended the approval of the conditional rezoning. As required by the ordinance, the applicant voluntarily offered up some conditions, and the planning commission approved the rezoning based on that. I won't go through the entire list of conditions, and those were in your packet, but primarily the conditions were related to site plan specifications. It also included that there be no outdoor storage at the location, which is also included in the ordinance, and then also any future modifications to the Eight Mile Service Drive in front of the building will be reviewed through MDOT, and any improvements will have to be through a permit approved by MDOT. And that was for the conditional rezoning. Then, the second public hearing was last week at the planning commission for the special land use application. There, we discussed the site plan and any further questions surrounding the business, and the planning commission also recommended approval for that as well. We feel that the proposed zoning fits with the goals and policies of the master land use plan for self, to include self-storage in that district, and I'm happy to answer any questions before the applicant kind of lays out a day in the life and how the operations would work there.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
And then, yep, if you want to come on up and just kind of give us an overview of your operations, and then, then we'll open it up to questions. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Justin. First of all, I would like to thank you, Mayor, and council members for your time and your consideration with this. My name is Dustin Holder, and I'm with 1-800-SelbstStorage.com, and I'm here with my partner, Ed Hirsch, who is also an owner of 1-800-Mini Storage. Ed has been in the self-storage business for a little over 15 years now, and he's built some just fantastic self-storage facilities in neighboring communities. They currently have locations in Oak Park, Troy, Melvindale, and actually, they're opening up this week in Plymouth, their new location. It's a gorgeous facility. So, a little background, I've been working for Ed for about 10 years now, and, you know, not only has he been a boss and a business partner of mine, but, but really, he's been a mentor, and he's, he's showed me a lot, he's taught me a lot, he's showed me the ropes, so to speak.
Even have matching shirts on, just.
Yeah. And that was not planned, I just want, I want to make that clear. But this is gonna be my first major project, and to have somebody like Ed as a partner, and the possibility of being a city like Ferndale is extremely exciting to me, so. With that being said, I guess that's, that's why we're here, we're, we're asking for a conditional rezoning and special land use for self-storage for the location at 1333 East Eight Mile Road. It's currently, currently, it is a 23,000-square-foot warehouse building, and I believe this sat vacant for quite a few years now. And what we'd like to do is to convert that to an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility, and we're looking to get actually 168 units in there, and we'll have roughly five parking spaces, which I believe is, is the amount that we would need for, for our size of a self-storage facility. All the access to the building will actually be coming from Eight Mile, we'll have no access to the building from the rear, which would be facing Bennett Street. There'll be two access points into the building, one of which would be an indoor load and unload area, and then also, if that's occupied, drive-up access as well. The, yeah, I'm assuming that everybody's had the opportunity to take a look at our renderings and elevations and plans, so you'll see, we intend on, on making some significant improvements to the building, not only from the Eight Mile side, but also from, from the Bennett Street. We'll be closing up some overhead doors, planting some trees, doing some painting, and really gonna make it look nice again back there. So, we've learned a long time ago that investing in, in our buildings, the way that they look, has, has paid great dividends in, in the long run, so we'll do everything we can to make this as beautiful as we can. Security, I guess, would be the next issue, it's, it's very important to us. Obviously, people won't store their belongings with us if they don't feel that it's in a safe environment. So that being said, we do have a state-of-the-art security system, which includes 24-hour video surveillance, both inside and outside. Each one of our units, our individual units, will be also armed with an alarm system, and each one of our customers that come in will be assigned a personal identification number. And they'll use that PIN number to enter in to access the building, which will then unlock, or disarm, I should say, the alarm on their individual unit. So that's great for a couple reasons. One, it allows us to keep track of anyone who's coming and going, and also, if anyone's in there and a unit is open, that shouldn't be, we're notified. So I guess, like Justin said, it might be beneficial just to kind of run through a day in the life, so to speak. So if you guys wouldn't mind maybe taking a look at the proposed site plan, I can kind of walk you through that. As you can see, and as I mentioned before, all the access to this building will be from the Eight Miles, from Eight Mile side. If they're coming for, if our customers are coming for the first time, they'll park in one of the five spaces that we have available to them. Hopefully, they'll be coming in and renting a unit from us, in which case, you know, we'll give them that, that PIN number that will allow them access to the building and to their unit. So when they come back, ah, perfect, Justin, I think he's pulling it up. There you go. There we go.
You know what I might do, not that I don't want you to go through the day in the life.
Sure.
But council is familiar with site plans, and we have had an opportunity to review this.
Fantastic.
Maybe at this point, I could just ask council if they have any questions about it.
Great, great.
How about that? Would that work for you?
That sounds fantastic to me, actually. Thank you.
Excellent, all right. Unless there's any, last thing you want to say before I do that, but we, we have...
No, because I love presentations, right, April?
Yeah, well, I'm grateful.
Okay, so, so let me, let me open it up to questions at this point, or comments.
I, I just have a comment, I just, I just want to say that, that area, as the mayor and I spoke to this a little while ago, is getting quite an uplift between you guys, and Mr. Scafone at Flynn is supposed to be doing some improvements on his building, and Mark from Moore City Pond is also making headway down there, and we appreciate that, because that's, it's been an eyesore down there for, for a long time. And the problem is, I know MDOT's holding up a lot of things on that parking lot, but that'll eventually happen, and I appreciate the security system going in, but you have a state-of-the-art police department here, too.
Yes, that's a big reason I would like it here.
Excellent.
But thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Polica?
Yes, I have some day-in-the-life questions for you.
Okay.
Now, obviously, you're, you, your responses are gonna be based on other units that you currently have, I understand that. So how many units generally open or close a week in, in a, in one of your facilities now? So you're saying there's 160 units. Obviously, when you first open, you know, probably the first month to, you know, two months, you're gonna have a lot of activity, new people moving in, but let's say a year from now, on average, how many people are moving in and out of your facility in a week?
Good question.
So, at our other facilities, we get about a 4% turnover.
Okay.
Per month, so at 168 units, this is called 200 units, it's like, it'd be eight.
Okay. In a month?
In a month.
Okay.
So it's two or three per week.
Okay, and how many customers do you have accessing units a day, coming in and out of your facility?
Good question, and self-storage in itself is an incredibly light use, typically just the nature of it all. People bring their belongings, and then they don't, I mean, unless if they want to move in a couch or take out a lamp or two.
They don't visit their stuff.
Yeah, they don't really visit their stuff very often, exactly.
Well, and, yeah, I have a unit, I haven't been there in a year and a half, you know, so, trust me, I, I understand that. But some facilities do cater more toward people who are short-term, you know, storing, so I didn't know if you were looking, if you were, you know, pursuing more of the short-term in and out, or if you're looking for more of the long-term.
Ideally, we'd like long-term, but all of our contracts are gonna be on a month-to-month basis, so.
Okay, again, my questions are always geared, because this particular area, as you know, is very limited parking, you know, and if you have, which, you know, obviously you're, you're not, in the beginning you may, but if you're gonna have, you know, 20 or 30, you know, customers coming in and out a day, that's a lot of activity for that very small area of parking. So that's where my concern is, and which I had the concern of the pawn shop that's going in a few, few doors down. My other concern is, is this drawing doesn't show it, because you're too close, but if you zoomed out, there's an actual driveway, which really, I don't think is on the books, maybe, to the west of the building by the tracks. My concern is, is as we move a lot of these service-type businesses into this facility, they're gonna be utilizing that street and using Bennett as a turnaround, so they're gonna be driving in off of Eight Mile, stopping at the pawn shop or the warehouse, then continuing west, so they get to the side street there, turn, you know, go north, hit Bennett, and take Bennett around to get back onto Eight Mile. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we need to be concerned with that street off to the west of, of people starting to use it all the time? And that's gonna, it's gonna impact the customers on Bennett.
Yeah.
Wanda, you mean?
No, Bennett.
No, but you said the street west.
I, I'm not sure if that's Wanda or not.
The easement, you talk about the easement between the train facility?
Yeah, it's not a street.
There's a barricade there, Derek explained it, there's a barricade there, and it's just an easement, it's not, they don't have a street name or anything, it's just a...
Yeah, but people could drive through it, because I've driven around it.
Well, you can't.
People are gonna, people are gonna discover it.
Maybe I can help clarify a little bit, because it is an unusual situation that runs across the front of there. The drive, we'll refer to it as the drive axis that runs east-west across the front of the building. It does dead-end into what is the dead-end, or connect to what is the dead-end of Wanda, and it is MDOT right-of-way. And, and trucks and other vehicles who service this site do exit often onto Wanda up to Nine Mile, because turning a truck around on the limited-access easement or driveway is near impossible. The planning commission had an extensive, extensive conversation about exactly that, and trip movements from this site north onto Wanda, from the west end of this site north onto Wanda, and whether there should be restrictions at Bennett or any other street. What they ultimately decided was, because of the low-volume use, especially with this, this is a self-storage facility, is about the lowest volume use on the books in our zoning ordinance, that any restriction at Bennett was just gonna move any traffic that wanted to come back to west end, just up, move it up a block, and move it up, every restriction you put in, doesn't stop them from making that movement, that right-hand turn off of Wanda and moving back to the east. By restricting Bennett or restricting the streets to the north, they would just move to the next street north, and ultimately decided not to place any, any restriction on that, but did ask staff to monitor that situation and... to monitor that situation and work with the police department and anybody else, engineering, DPW, if there is a demonstrated problem with trip movements or too many non-residential vehicle movements on Bennett or any of the other streets, and then look to see if we can find an alternative solution. So that was discussed, that is the, it was the recommendation of the planning commission and how the site plan was approved at that time. If that helps answer the question.
Yeah, you're basically saying the planning commission decided not to do anything about it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, what they decided to do was.
Because there isn't anything we can do.
Well, it's not a matter of there's not anything we can do, it's that anything ultimately makes traffic circulation, in their estimation, worse than what it is with full movement to Wanda. Because Wanda is an industrial-access drive, and that is what connects to this. Any uses that go into this site need to be able to get on and off the site without having to be able to do two and three, you know, turning-point movements, whether it's truck access. If we want to limit the deliveries and truck access to the rear of the site at Bennett, which was the planning commission's goal, was any, whether it's a UPS truck or anything else, would access these buildings from the front of the site, not from Bennett where they historically have, and to move those commercial vehicles to the front of the site, garbage trucks, lots of other things. The pawn shop has moved their garbage facilities to the front of the building. Because of the narrow width of the drive access, it would be difficult for them to operate, turn around and go back to the Eight Mile. It's expected they'll use Wanda to continue out of the site, as opposed to having access to the rear.
Any other questions?
Um, not as it relates to the use of this facility, but when we make a motion, I do want to have another conversation.
All right.
About zoning.
Are we ready for a motion?
Um, I move that we approve the conditional rezoning request for 1333 East Eight Mile Roads Sidwell Number 2535459009, with the conditions as presented.
Support. Moved by Pollack and supported by Martin. Additional questions or comments? I might just ask one, since Derek, you're already standing up. Since this is the second project on that street that we have rezoned, is the zoning wrong?
I don't know if.
Is that something we need to fix in the master plan?
It's definitely gonna be reevaluated. I don't want to say it's wrong, but we have a demonstrated issue with the range of uses allowed in the OS zoning district, and the buildings that are zoned that way.
Yeah.
The buildings, most of them that are in the OS district, and I understand the reason why the zoning district was put in place at the time, are historically industrial buildings with limited parking, which limits the range of uses that can be put there, especially office-type uses. The office service district, the uses listed, many of them don't seem to fit with the available stock of buildings. The planning commission's asked us to go back and took, take a look at the OS district and see if uses, they were very specific about a use like self-storage, because it is such a low-impact use. If that might be an appropriate use, if, if not to change the OS district, but at least amend it and add some other uses that would prevent these properties from having to be rezoned. So I don't know if it'll be done as part of the master plan, Mayor, but it is being looked into right now.
All right.
Yeah, originally, that, that's actually the conversation that I wanted to have, so I appreciate you bringing it up, Mayor. Is, I know that several years ago, the planning commission recommended that a lot of the properties on, on Eight Mile be rezoned to office service, because we wanted to, you know, promote those type of businesses on Eight Mile. But I think there was a lack of investigation in what type of properties a lot of these buildings, these properties were, and, you know, Provision and a dentist office isn't gonna move into an old tool and die shop. So I'm hoping that we do revisit some of these zonings, which, again, is, is one of the reasons why I pulled the other item off of the consent agenda. But I think this particular use is perfect for this facility and this location. It's a low-volume impact for the amount of space on-site, parking and driving space.
So are there other questions or comments from council, or the public, by the way? If there's anyone here that wants to comment on this issue. All right, well, we have a motion and a support, so Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollack.
Yes.
Lennon.
Lennon.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Just one more meeting, Mike, you're.
I know, I'm just, I'm just back here. Me and you and Dan, you guys are scratching it.
All right, the, the regular agenda item now D was the agenda item G.
Excuse me, there's, there's two motions. There's one for the conditional land use, and then there's another for the special land use.
Oh.
There was two separate motions. They do need to be made separately.
I would have done them, bro.
Sorry, well, they need to be made separately.
No, I appreciate that you did, yes, thank you. Is there, is there a motion for this special land use?
I'm trying to find it.
I'm looking. Um, I make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning of.
No, that was the original one. The next one is the land use.
Oh. Uh, I move that we approve the special land use requested for 1333 East Eight Mile Roads Sidwell Number 2535459009, with the following conditions and findings as presented.
Support. And supported. Moved by Pollack and, and supported by Martin. Is there any comments, questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollack.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, Derek, for keeping us on task. Thank you, gentlemen, welcome to town.
Welcome, guys. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to your success.
Thank you. And Justin and Derek have been a great help. They've spent a lot of time with us, and I'd like to thank them.
I always love to hear that as well. Thank you, appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you.
Justin, good job. Uh, the next item of business is former consent on agenda item G, which is the approval of the 1461 East Mi, East Eight Mile Road rezoning agreement, as submitted by Community and Economic Development Director. And Councilman Pollack, you pulled that item.
Uh, I did, and I pulled it because when this originally was brought to council, when the, the request to utilize this property for this purpose was brought to council, I voted against it, and therefore, I'm still standing by my vote, so I didn't want it part of the packet. So I would appreciate it if we could do a separate vote on this, so that I could keep my, my vote as consistent.
Yep. Yes, and, and I would just maybe remind staff that if, if there is something that has, there was an opposition to, it probably should never be on the consent agenda, just as a matter of principle.
Agreed.
Because that's a fair point, Councilman, we should have put it there. Okay, any other discussion on that item? We need a motion.
Uh, I move that the city council approve the conditional rezoning agreement for 1461 East Eight Mile Road Motor City Pawn Brokers Sidwell Number 24-25-35-459-006, to be approved by the mayor and recorded by the city clerk.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Any other discussion? All right, Marnie, would you call the role?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollack.
No.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. Uh, we're moving now to call to council, and I see the police chief is here with us this evening. Chief, anything for the good of the community?
Do have a few things, Your Honor, thank you.
Thanks.
First, I would like to throw a pen on the floor.
Make the new guy pick it up.
Thanks, buddy. I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, but as we do that, we are reminded that we are going now into the shopping season for the holidays, and we would like to remind our residents and our visitors to our community to please keep an eye on your belongings, particularly when you're parking, is to make sure you lock your cars, make sure that if you have packages and things of like, that nature in your vehicle, that you try to hide them or put them out of the plain sight. We also have still been experienced, although it's on the decline of some folks leaving their cars unlocked and parked in front of the, on their residential streets. This is the fastest, safest, and easiest way to keep folks out of your cars, is simply to lock them. We did have an experience in the fall where we had many of our cars that were being attacked in that nature. It's on the decline. We've made a couple of arrests, but for the most part, it's a good reminder to, for folks to, to lock their cars. We want to thank everybody for showing up at the auxiliary dinner, it was a great event. Everybody here was there. The auxiliary's had a great time, I got a lot of very positive feedback from our volunteers that did that, that do that very important function for us. Of course, they all got up the next day and did the holiday hoof and festive ale, so we utilize, we utilize them after that event. Lastly, we would like to remind everybody about the Craigslist, uh, place that we have, safe, distribution place that we have in front of the police station. Please utilize that over the weekend. We did have a Craigslist, kind of a weird one, where we had, it actually began in the city of Detroit, in the parking lot of the, of the new facility there at Eight Mile and Woodward. It bled over into our city, they crashed into each other. It turned out it was gonna be a robbery, we arrested the individual that was trying to rip off somebody over an iPhone. He had like 23, he was trying to purchase an iPhone with counterfeit money, and he had 23 counterfeit $20 bills in his pocket when we arrested him. Now he's in the custody of the Secret Service, so he has a little bit of a problem there. But we do like, want to remind the citizens that we do have a safe haven place for you to do Craigslist transactions, thanks to Councilman Lennon, and we encourage people to use that. And other than that, we hope everybody has a happy holiday.
Thanks, Chief.
You too, Chief.
Yep, you too. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, same as Chief Collins, I'd like to give everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but with the holidays upon us, hopefully, everyone knows after last weekend, your furnaces came on. If you haven't, you should probably have them checked and change filters. And if you're going to burn wood in your fireplace, check your chimneys and that, and then any kind of kerosene or auxiliary heat sources, make sure they're away from clothing and anything combustible, and plugged into a GFIC, which will kick off if anything should go wrong. Other than that, happy holidays.
Excellent. Thanks, Chief, you too. Derek, anything else from economic development this evening?
I'm gonna mention one thing, just because I know he'll hate me for it. Our full-time code enforcement officer, Jeffrey Williams, recently has been taking some classes and passed his certification exam for the International Code Council Property Maintenance and Code Enforcement Certification.
Excellent.
And that is no small measure. He's the first inspector of any level other than the fire marshal to be certified by the International Code Council. He took that on himself, we're very pleased with it. His job duties now, of course, will expand, but this is more, yeah, this is more, when you see him, make sure you, you point it out to him, because it'll be his least favorite part of the day, so.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek. Joe, anything from the recreation department this evening?
Just one quick announcement. Coming up on December 5th is our annual holiday showplace at the Kulak Center from 9:00 to 3:00, so if you can continue your Christmas shopping that day at the center. In conjunction with that event, we are also doing our annual breakfast with Santa from 8:00 to 10:00. We still have space available, so you can register online at FerndaleMI.gov.
Excellent, thanks, Joe.
Boy, Dan's got a full schedule.
Jenny, anything from HR this evening? All right, uh, anything from DPW this evening?
Yes. I would just like to give a brief leaf collection update.
Thank you, yep.
Um, we were looking good, we were ahead of the game through last Friday.
You can't beat Mother Nature.
No. Starting Saturday, all our crews went from collecting leaves to keeping the roads clear, city sidewalks and the parking lots. So we were back on leaf collection today. As in previous years, the cutoff, I mean, we collect through the end of November, but it is slowing us down with the warmer weathers, it should start to make, speed up a little bit, and I just want to reassure everybody that the, the leaves that are on the street now, we will go ahead and, we'll get them even if.
Well, the, the snow has slowed down the raking as well, so.
Yes.
You're not the only one. Great, thank you, thanks.
Matt, you and the man and woman at DPW did a fine job switching hats real quick like that.
Thank you. Yeah, they, they, we converted a few trucks back to assault trucks.
Yeah, I know.
Now we're going back to leaf trucks.
People take that for granted, but it's no small task to do that.
But we're still saving money, that's all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Kara, anything from the community engagement area this evening?
Hello, thank you. I have one quick announcement. I hear from the lovely ladies who take phone calls from the public up in City Hall that we've had a slight uptick in calls where people are confused about where to go on our website to pay their bill, their utility bill. So I thought it would be the good time to give a little bit of an update about our website. We have spent some time in the last three or four months, I would say, doing a real look at our content and the way everything is laid out on the website. And we are now in the process throughout the month of December of putting a new plan into action. This is not a website refresh or anything like that, it's really just a look at how the content is placed on there and what we're including. And just implementing a few changes that will hopefully make it easier for residents to find kind of the basic commands that they're looking for when they get on our website. So the goal is that that should be done the week of Christmas, and I will be happy to provide another update about that at the next meeting, but so far, we are on schedule, so looking good.
Look forward to that, thank you. Through the mayor? I've noticed that there are websites now, and maybe they've been around for a while, but I found that there are websites where I go to, and if I use certain links, that they tend to be near the top of other links. So each time I go to the website, it determines what I use more often. Is that something we could incorporate on our website?
It's something we could look at once the website is up for, for a redo, which I think we're about a year away from. And it's something I'll certainly look into with Artemis, which is the company we work with now, and see if it's possible. Right now, I believe the website is structured so that it takes the most popular links and populates them, so it might not be your most popular link, but it's the general public's most popular.
Yeah.
If it's something that they can easily do and won't cost us money, which is kind of what we're, you know, we don't have a drop-down navigation, so when you hover over something, you don't get a drop-down, that's something we want to make a change on right now. If it's something we can incorporate in with that, we will absolutely do it, and if not, we'll put it on our slate to look at in the next year.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I guess if I can ask a follow-up question, is the work being done on the website today being done by Artemis, or are you handling all that internally?
No, we handle, well, anything that affects the design or the kind of overarching layout, so if we wanted to add links, if we want to change kind of the site structure, we have to go through Artemis. If we want to add pages, take away pages, that kind of thing, we can do that ourselves.
Is that covered under a master contract, then, or is it a per job, if we keep moving buttons around, we have to pay more?
I don't know the answer to that question, honestly. That's a Joe question, and unfortunately, he's not here tonight.
Okay, we can follow up on him, if he can follow up, that would be.
There's a, I know there's a certain level of basic work that's involved that is covered in our contract, and then if we go above and beyond that, we end up looking at individual costs, which is why we try not to do that.
Right.
But I'm not sure where they are or where the line is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kara.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Marnie, anything from the clerk's office?
Um, no, nothing tonight.
All right, thanks. April, anything from the city manager's office this evening?
Just a few things, a couple reminders, actually, just a friendly reminder that this, or not so friendly. Maybe not. That this week is, City Hall is closed on Thursday and Friday due to the observance of Thanksgiving holiday, and it is a friendly reminder that there is free parking on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday downtown. Also, a friendly reminder that we only have one meeting in December, that's December 14th, for those that do manage council meetings. 14th, for those that do manage council meetings, and another friendly reminder that we do have goal-setting on Monday, November 30th here at City Hall.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Your choice, Mike, if you-
Yeah, I know. That's what you're serving in the morning and in the afternoon.
Van Chris, anything from the legal perspective?
Just one item, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that the oral arguments regarding the Libranoy quiet title matter has been set by the court for January 20th, so hopefully we'll have a resolution of that matter at that point.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, Councilman Martin?
Just happy Thanksgiving, that's it. In honor of Mike's.
Yeah, all I have is-
How's your land?
Happy Thanksgiving, and happy Thanksgiving to the men and women in our armed forces that cannot be with a loved one or, you know, over the holidays.
Well said, thank you. Councilman Pollocka?
A couple things. On the heels of Commissioner Elaine Zax's comments about some illegal activities, calls and people coming to your door, there's a number of things lately I've noticed, people calling claiming that they're the IRS. The IRS is not going to call you, they will send you a formal letter. They are not going to call you out of the blue, do not give them any, you know, confidential information. If someone comes to the door and claims they're a utility person, ask for a business card. If they might not have a uniform, maybe they're in work equipment, they should at least have a business card that has some information. If they don't have a business card, ask them then just for a phone number. You do not have to let anybody in your house that does not provide valid information. Ask for a phone number, tell them to wait, call that number, find out if it's legit. I'm just concerned over the holidays, the last couple of weeks, there have been a lot of people that have written about questionable people coming to their doors and questionable phone calls. Also goes for phone calls about internet support, you know, getting odd messages on your computer to call Microsoft. Microsoft is not going to ask you to call them, so I wanted to get that out. Second thing, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Please remember that while we're enjoying Thanksgiving, our great police and fire department, they're all working, they're not spending time with their families, so keep them in mind on our holiday, and that's it.
Great, thank you. First, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to all our residents. I hope you all enjoy a beautiful holiday with your family, friends or significant others. And secondly, I want to reiterate, Mary Schusterbauer came and she spoke about the program Ferndale Past and Present, how did we get to the Ferndales today? And I think this is really going to be an informative look at, frankly, the racial demographics in Ferndale and how they've changed over time. I think that the history of race and relations in Ferndale has not always been progressive, to be frank with you. Maybe the saddest example of that was in education, where we literally had to be sued by the federal government into integrating our schools. So this kind of an event, in my opinion, is important for us to better understand our past and how we can use that knowledge to better understand where we are today, so I want to encourage our residents to attend. You know, I used to think that the opposite of love was hate, but I've come to realize that the opposite of love is not hate, it's fear. And fear, fear of what's different, or unknown, or misunderstood, is a powerful force, both in our own lives and in our communities. In Ferndale, we've come a long way in how we treat people who are different, whether they be black, or gay, or any number of other characteristics. We're not perfect, but we become a community that doesn't just celebrate diversity, but we actually understand the value of having different voices at the table. But today, there's another fear that we must be mindful of, and that's the fear of people who may practice a different religion and may come from a different country, where terrorism is a tragic fact of life. The horrible bombings in Paris have made us all more concerned for our safety, and I know our great local police department are doing all that they can, including working with other law enforcement agencies to protect our residents. But we can't let the Paris bombings erase the progress that we've made to be an inclusive community. I don't get on this soapbox very often, but I have been shocked by the rhetoric from leaders that would stigmatize people based on who they worship or where they're from. People literally fleeing from the violence and persecution of the places that they live. We've worked hard to become a community that we have today, and I know I speak for my colleagues when I say, it's the official policy of Ferndale to embrace all legitimate people who want to make a contribution to a safe and welcoming city. Thank you very much. And with that meaning-
Well said, Mayor, you're here.
Meeting is adjourned.[1513.13]